Alright, so good afternoon. On behalf of the South Carolina Education Association and its local affiliate, the Spartanburg County Association of Educators, welcome. The SCAE is the oldest professional association of its kind, composed of public school staff who take pride in advocating for their profession and public education. My name is Caleb Mickler. I do the public affairs, book support, and communications for the SCAE and its locals. So here's a few words that the current president of the local affiliate, Jeff Lamb, who is an educator at Burns High. He just wanted to say a few remarks. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here, so just bear with me really quick and we'll get it going. So, good afternoon, everyone. A significant part of what we do as educators involves discussions and decisions that are made by our school board trustees that directly impact our work and, most importantly, the children we serve. Did you know that over eighty-five percent of K through twelve students in the county attend public school? That's a high number, and the decisions made by our local school board members are crucial in shaping their futures in the communities from which we call home here in Spartanburg County. At SCAE and the SCAE, we emphasize the importance of maintaining and engaging a collaborative relationship with all seven of our school boards, as well as the superintendents, as well as with families and the communities. Which is why we are facilitating these nonpartisan, fair and impartial gatherings for educators and the community to meet those running for our local school boards. If you'd like to learn more about the association, please talk Caleb, so that's why I raised my hand. Anyway, with all that being said, let me introduce our moderator for the evening, Baker Maltzby. Baker is a daycare journalist with the Spartanburg Herald Journal, who was a K-12 beat reporter and is an overall watchdog reporter for the Greenville-Spartanburg region. He is known for his investigative reporting and commitment to community issues. Baker has established himself as a trusted voice in the area outside of journalism. He didn't tell this part, but we had some research. He is a talented musician with roots dating back to his college days at Roethford, where he played in multiple bands and made lots of songs and lots of good times. So without further ado, Baker, please take it away.
Okay, thank you, Caleb. All that. Yeah, I'm Baker Maltzby, I'm with the Herald Journal. And we're now part of the Gannett Group in the upstate, so we're hooked in now with the Greenville News, which in my first tour of the Herald Journal was a competitor, and I was away for a long time and now back, and we're all part of the same group. So it's a little bit different. The old Herald Journal building, of course, downtown is gone. I mostly work from home. Will go to the office in Greenville occasionally, although it's, you know, to drive to Greenville to write about things going on in Spartanburg is a little bit funny to juggle, but it's been great. It's a good group of journalists, and we've got a great editor named Lisa Richardson, who I appreciate very much. And so we're trying to, you know, trying to provide some good coverage where we can. So this is brought to you all by the Spartanburg County Association of Educators and the South Carolina Education Association, so the SCAE and the SCAE, with support from the League of Women, voters of Spartanburg County, and which, you know, want to have these nonpartisan civic forums for folks in the, is all the districts here in the county that are having a school board race, and there will be another, just one more of these, is that right?
Yeah.
District seven, on Tuesday, September the 30th, at C.C. Woodson. So if anybody's interested in that, they've got a seat or two up for grabs there as well. District six, as y'all probably all know, is Spartanburg's west side with Anderson Mill, Arcadia, Arkright, Fair Forest, Glen Springs, Hilltop, Pauline, Roebuck, and other, some of the really interesting areas of our county, I think. And the Spartanburg County Association of Educators has extended an invitation to all eight of the candidates who have been approved to appear on the ballot on November the 4th. So we have three today. Kevin Harrison, who's currently on the board, Kristy Lindsey, and Troy Yarborough, who is the board's vice chair. Everyone has agreed to the format, and the candidates will be asked a series of the same questions submitted by educators and by the public, and they will have two minutes to speak and answer the question, and potentially one more minute as a follow-up question if if I be Mr. or you did.
Yeah, yeah. You can never say, I'm just here.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah.
As we complete the questions, time permitting, we will take questions from you all in the audience. If time does not permit, we encourage you to speak with the candidates and stick around and have some conversation. Caleb is our timekeeper, who has color-coded cards during the forum. Green card means to start, yellow means thirty seconds remaining, and the red card means to please go ahead and wrap it up. And, once the red card is up. Sorry?
No buzzer. We got no mics, so, yeah.
But it says here, once the red card is up, I will need to interrupt the candidate and have them finish their sentence. So I don't want to have to interrupt.
It's okay. We have enough time.
I don't like conflict. No, in any case, I'll read the question, and then the two-minute time begins. We feel that the audience understands the nature of this. It's a nonpartisan race and it's a community-oriented event, so please no shouting, or cheering, or jeering.
We're in a good group.
I believe the superintendent's here, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, please don't, you know, boo any of the candidates.
No, I wouldn't do that.
Okay. It's easy. No, anyway, we just wanted to be a nice polite event. I'm sure it will be that, and here to just learn more about what these folks think and what's going on in District Six. So, candidates, we look forward to hearing your policies and vision where the children are always first here in District Six. We have a lot of ground to cover, so. Picking a name first? Okay, picking a name, and then we will... What did you want to say about this mug?
Well, it's in the script, but anyway. So this mug is from the Delane Pearson Briggs Foundation. So what's interesting is, they just had their groundbreaking in Claritin County. What people may not know, like you hear of Brown versus the Board of Education, actually the first case of the five was Briggs v. Elliott. And the SCAE, its predecessor, which was the Palmetto Education Association, provided necessary resources and support to make that case happen and bring it to the Supreme Court, which challenged the belief of the constitutionality of, well, what was later unconstitutional, but the belief of segregation in education. So the SCAE is very proud of that history, and lots of the educators, especially here in Spartanburg County, who made that happen as well, to support educators down in Claritin County to challenge that, so.
So it was an official mug?
Official mug, and utter swag, but, you know, so.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we'll get it going. And so drew names, I'm going left or right from what I picked, and please each of you, just tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run, run again, want to serve the school district as a trustee. Kevin first.
Alright. Well, my name is Kevin Harrison, got the green card going, so I've been on the board now for sixteen years. And when I think about why, I think it's just kind of in my DNA. My parents, nineteen sixty-four is when the original dorm room opened, and they were the very first class to go, at that point it was tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, they were the very first class to go through all three years and finish. And so, while they finished in sixty-seven, my wife and I graduated in ninety-one, I've got three children that have graduated so far from dorm, and I've got two more, I've got an eleventh grader and a tenth grader. And so, you know, when I think about, you know, why I serve in this, you talk about the children are always first, I mean, we really believe that. I mean, that's, I love, thank you for putting this on, thank you guys for coming, and I love having the opportunity to talk about District Six and what we do, and us, and we really do put children first. And one of the things, you know, mission and purpose of my life has been children and kids, you know, involved in so many ways, running little leagues, I've been, I got a mentor group of about ten boys, a lot of really high-risk kids, that I've been doing for about twenty years now, every Friday at lunch. You know, outside of my walk with the Lord, my family, running my business, the real mission and purpose of my life is helping kids and finding kids wherever they are, and trying to give them the best chance they got. And in public education, we're the only chance a lot of these kids have. A lot of them come to us in really, really tough situations, and I just love being a part of, you know, our district and seeing that, man, we take these kids in and we do things with them, give them the resources they need, and our educators spend time educating them, and not only educate them on math and reading and those things, but also giving them the life skills they need.
Okay, Kristy.
So my name is Kristy Lindsey. I'm here from Spartanburg, I've been on Spartanburg, born and raised. I have a seventh grader who is currently at Gable Elementary School, and so, or at Gable Middle School, and the driving force for me was his starting education. He couldn't talk very well at three years old, and at that time, there wasn't a lot of resources for us, my husband and I, so we put him in private services therapy. And then we learned that there's a law in South Carolina that school districts have to provide private services for children once they're three years of age or older. And so he went to the Child Development Center, which is in District Six, which is an amazing resource, completely changed the trajectory of my son's education. So I'm very, have a very big heart for service. I've been in public government for twenty-four years, and so I just feel like, like Caleb was talking about, it's a calling, and it truly is. I think we are called to be servants, and I want to do my part to help those children that are starting early, to make sure they have every available resource to ensure that they succeed in our district, and that they don't run into certain roadblocks that maybe they can't speak well, or maybe they have a mental disability, or maybe they have a physical disability. And those should never be stumbling blocks for our children to succeed in our district. So that's why I've chosen to run, and I look forward to working with these folks and coming to the election.
Alright, and Troy.
Well, I'd like to echo Kevin and Kristy's compliments for hosting this, and thank you guys for being in attendance. Like these two, being a resident here in District Six and having children that have gone through the District Six schools, gives you a passion for what this district is all about. There are some really awesome things happening in our district that a lot of folks don't know about, particularly if you don't have children that are going through various schools. Four years ago, we had a unique opportunity, and four years ago was when I joined the board along with two other newer board members. And at that time, there was a turnover of board staff, retirements, and a lot of talent drained from the board, folks who had really contributed in numbers of years in helping the evolution and the growth of what this district now looks like. And it was important to me, as a resident in District Six, those with four kids, my spouse is a teacher, elementary teacher here in the district, but I have personally seen what this district can do. I have one child left in District Six, a junior at dorm, and the other three have all benefited individually from offerings that this district has put forth for them. My oldest child, as a matter of fact, not only decided her career path to become a teacher because of the experiences she had at dorm through the Teacher Cadet Program, she now has come back to the district and is starting her third year up in the northern part of the district, teaching elementary school, third grade. And so there's a passion that, four years ago, when the opportunity presented, to help. The other side of that equation is, I work in a business world that I felt like I could add something to the board. When I looked at the composition of the board, I looked at the backgrounds of the board members and all that they brought to the table, I felt like I could be helpful, and I felt like that what I did every day in the business world would translate very well to the challenges and the struggles on teacher recruitment and retention and culture. And I think that's borne itself out over the last few years, and certainly going to continue to be challenging the coming years.
Okay, y'all, thank you. Alright. Put these back in, these are all random. Okay. Let me tell you what, why don't we have Kristy start first this time? And the question is, probably one you predict, how do you recommend that school districts address the issues of teacher recruitment and retention for both classified and certified educators? Because there's a lot of, we think about the certified teachers, but a lot of classified staff too, who make things work and work directly with kids and support the district.
So I think, like Troy was saying, our district did a really great thing several years back when they came up with the ELC, to support our staff, teachers, and to anybody to be able to send the District Six family, to be able to send their children to that facility. In my opinion, I think that's a huge tool to have for recruitment efforts, and also to make sure that we obtain the very best teachers there are. That is a huge resource, but then I think we also sit down and we have some surveys, and we sit down with these teachers and have, you know, focus groups to find out what keeps you in District Six, what drives you, because our teachers are important, and we need to make sure that they feel that they can succeed in our district and also our students.
Okay. We'll go Troy and Kevin.
Yeah, I think this is our number one challenge right now, is how do we continue to bring talented individuals to share the District Six mindset, that have a cultural mindset of taking the best possible care of kids that we can, and putting them in the best possible position regardless of their background, regardless of what their situation at home is, regardless of their abilities. That's what public education is all about. And so, as Kristy said, doing things based on the feedback of our existing teachers. Our teachers want to feel safe, they want to feel like the facilities are safe, they want to work in a culture that they feel supported, they want to feel heard, and that's what exists today in our district. We have teacher advisory forums, our district office staff does a phenomenal job of pulling our teachers together across all of our schools, getting feedback of those teachers to understand, in all positions really, to understand what's important to them. That actually led to the creation of the Early Learning Center, Child Care Center, for our staff members, to create a vehicle. We've seen that decision pay dividends, as we've been able to recruit teachers from other outlying districts who want to come work in our district because of that. And so I think you just have to create a safe environment and culture, and our district office does a phenomenal job of engagement, discussion, and listening to our staff to understand the challenges that they have in the classroom, and then supporting them.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, I think it's, there's a couple of different answers to it. Some we have control over, some we don't. I think number one is using our influence with the people in Columbia to get the budgets done, but the budgets go through about three or four different phases, and usually they start with a bigger teacher raise, and then that gradually ends up getting cut down before the final budget comes down. So I think, you know, putting pressure there to be able to get teachers to be able, educators to be paid what they deserve to be paid, is a big one. Then I think you have to look at, you know, the thing, what are the things you can do as a district that helps? And I think the way we find those things out is through a teacher forum. That's all for Teachers of the Year, they get together, and they meet with our district staff, and they give them good feedback. We do surveys, I think we sent out a survey last week. That's correct, to all staff, to figure out what are the things we're looking for. And that's where, like I said, at the ELC, you talked about, Early Learning Center, that's where, you know, it's younger, it's younger kids, and our staff and our district staff can take their kids there, and then the Wellness Center, which we've got our own wellness clinic, if you're sick, your kids are sick or something, you can take them, you can go there. But I think the most important thing, one that's often overlooked, is teacher retention concern, leadership and culture. And leadership and culture of providing environments where people are heard, where they have access, that's one of the things. I mean, our teachers will, I mean, they will call, I mean, I get rarely does we go by, I don't hear from two or three of our teachers just about things, good and bad. And I think we've got a board that's very accessible to that. But then you talk about the culture, and one of the things that I love more than anything, I had one, her name's Sarah Mitchell, she teaches over at Fair Forest Elementary, she texted me a picture of her finishing her first marathon, but she was one of our kids that came through school and then went and got educated, and then she came back to talk. Troy mentioned his daughter, his daughter did the same thing. We have a lot of kids that come through, that get their education at dorm, and they understand what we are, they go to college, and once they want to teach, they come back home, and there's nothing like more than that.
Alright, thank y'all. We'll start with Troy on this one. Little bit of background, South Carolina reportedly leads the nation with the most banned books from school libraries, and I don't know if it extends to classrooms as well. Part of this has to do with some policy at the state level where an individual can challenge, one person can go and challenge, you know, a range of books based on the content. What are y'all's thoughts on the removal of books from school libraries at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and the policy surrounding, you know, maybe the procedures for how that might take place?
Yeah, I don't think I'll need two minutes to answer this. The state is very clear on the process for that, and we are obligated to ultimately follow the state process, and thankfully, when we say District Six is different, not an issue that we run into.
Okay.
Yeah, I echo that. I mean, we're stately spoken on that, we're bound, we're bound by that, but, you know, we've done things, I think, going back to the following, the previous question of, I think the culture and climate we've created is one where we just have not had that issue. I know this, most of this stems from one incident, one school, that where there's a lot of, lot of stuff going on, we just, we have not had that.
Okay, Kristy.
Yeah, and I would echo them as well, you know, the state makes that decision, thank goodness, and if it were to come to where it was an issue that we would have to address, my approach would be, there'll be a collaborative approach to look and see what that looks like for each grade level, and that would include our parents, our educators, I mean, they're the ones ultimately in the classroom with these folks. So, yeah, that would be the way I would approach it, but thankfully, you know, that's at the state level.
Okay. Anything, Ned? Okay. Alright, I'll go back to Troy. We'll start once, this time with Mr. Yarborough. What do you see as the role and kind of the interplay and relationship of public schools, private schools, and charter schools for education in the state, and how resources are directed, and how the, again, kind of the relationship of all three kind of entities?
Yeah, I'll lean forward, because I'm pretty passionate about this. I think parents ultimately have the best insight and responsibility to know and do what's best for their children, and I'll start with that. With that said, I represent what I consider to be the best district in the state of South Carolina, and at no point would I advocate for or support resources being taken away from that. When you think about what we offer in District Six, when you think about the variety and the, literally, the backgrounds and the students that we serve, cut across so many different spectrums, that the funding required to serve these children, whether that's through IEPs, whether that's through specialty programs, the reality is, losing funding and support would not go over very well, and so we're passionate about driving as much, as much as we possibly can, as Kevin mentioned, through our actions in Columbia, to ensure that funding stays consistent and growing to meet the needs of our growing population in District Six.
Gotcha. Thank you. Kristy.
Yeah, so I don't believe that education is a one-size-fits-all for every child. And like Troy was saying, I think in South Carolina, there are other opportunities, be it public, private, you know, however you want to handle it, but as a parent, you get to choose where you send your child. And my husband and I are so thankful that our child is in District Six. I did not, I'm not a product of District Six, I don't say what district I came from, but I cannot even tell you the vast difference that this district has over other districts in our county, and I'm so blessed that our child gets to go through the school system here, and I think that, you know, those other options are great, but of course, I would champion that the tax dollars and any funding be beneficiary to our schools here and to our teachers and students.
And Kevin?
Yeah, I'm going to be in agreement, and I think parents need to decide what's best for their kids. And I've got a huge friend group, a lot of them choose to go to private school, a lot of them are in public school, and that's, you've got to decide what's best for your child. But I can't say strongly enough how against I am the funding, any kind of funding model that would take money away from public schools to go into those schools. And it happens a lot of different ways, but they need to be held at the same standard. We need to be comparing apples to apples to apples, and here's the big thing, here's the biggest difference. And when you see test scores and all these other kind of different things, and is, we, when we say every child matters, we mean everyone, and we mean we take them all. And there's discussions we have as a board and the district that some of these kids are disliked, they're on their, it's like a cat that has nine lives, but they're on their nineteenth life, and we're like, but we're going to do everything we can to try to help them. We're over, of course, it's different now with lunches, but we're over fifty percent free and reduced lunch in our district. We've got nice buildings and all this, and a lot of people think we're just a really rich district, but we're not. A lot of these kids, I'll echo it again, we're the only shot they've got is education, and I believe that public education is one of those things, and I have some interesting discussions with some of mine, and I'm very conservative in my thinking, but I had a very interesting discussion with some of my good friends who were conservative in their thinking of this discussion about how public school and public education is absolutely critical to a society that's going to be a strong society, and many of the things that are out there on public education, again, third time I said it, I'm so passionate about it, is that we're the only shot a lot of these kids have.
We have a follow-up question about whether public dollars should be used to fund private education, or including private charter schools. I think everybody addressed that, but if anybody would like to add to it, you know? Educators don't love excessive paperwork. Don't know how much school boards can really necessarily affect that, but there may be opportunities and discussions with administrators and policymakers at the state level. Sometimes they feel like they take work home with them that, you know, that may not be paid for. I guess lesson planning is just part of it, but when it's sort of extra things that are just, feel like administrative work, they may not always love that. How would you address these concerns when educators want to come talk to you about it or bring it to y'all's attention? Why don't we start with Kristy?
Sure, that's a great question. I think the time of our teachers and staff in the district is one of the single most precious resources that we have, and so we need to be open to listen to them and find ways that we can help them balance that work, life, home. And also, you know, we, we look at, I know, my fellows deciding to have been on the board and served on the board, I'm sure they intricately go through the budget and look line by line, and that's important, but it's also important that we look at, carefully weigh out the benefits of asking teachers to do additional things in their day that adds time to their day, so we need to carefully look at that as well.
Thank you. Kevin?
Hey, I think, I live with one, and so my wife's a guidance counselor, she's been like about twenty years in District Six now, and she deals with a lot of things, mental health, a lot of different things, and the paperwork can become completely overwhelming in that piece. Talked to a lot of teachers that, they talk about how those kind, how do we, how do we clear the mud, for lack of a better term, on some of those things. Some of those I've got no control of. These come from the state, they come from the agencies, we deal with those kind of things. A few things we've done, you know, I think it's thirty minutes per day, is that right? I think it's thirty minutes. One hour, one, okay, it's one hour. So we've got one hour per day that they get, the unencumbered time, that's a big word. First time I heard, I was like, what's that word mean? It means nobody's messing with you, you're able to do, you're able to do what you need to do. I think a big thing that goes a little bit unnoticed is, we created something called Family First Wednesdays, that is where we don't send homework home, we encourage our educators and our kids to just enjoy each other, enjoy the time together. That's something that hopefully, because we see the, man, we'll see, when you drive by any of our schools, you'll see, you'll see cars there after hours, you'll see them there on the weekends and those kind of things, and in fact, we try to encourage them not to do that, but it is working with the state level again, and a lot of these questions, the school board actually has the least amount of power over our local schools than the state and federal governments, which I believe is completely backwards, but working with them to eliminate some of that bureaucracy and paperwork, but I think that one-hour unencumbered time, and just making sure that happens, making sure we're able to give them that, where they can actually plan, do the things they do, so they're not taking this stuff home with them at night, because that's it. You know, we've all seen, if you've lived and educated, or been one, and so I think, I think just staying on focus with that, because they are the engine that drives this train.
Troy, thank you.
Yeah, I think a couple of really good points made by both. I would add, start with the root of the problem. You keep class sizes small, it changes the workload, and this district does a phenomenal job of starting at the top and creating facilities that allow our teachers to have smaller classes, and while that has a direct correlation to the amount of paperwork, they then work based on the number of students, it also has an opportunity to create a greater impact, because when you have fewer students... Because when you have fewer students, you can be more effective and spend more time. And I think our teachers really appreciate that. And so, um, cutting the, the, the barges off, if you will, on all of the extraneous, certainly through unencumbered time and protecting unencumbered time, and we've done that over the last couple of years. But more importantly, keeping class size smaller or on the smallish side allows our teachers to be more effective, our educators to be more effective, be great at what they're great at, and take less work home.
Thank you.
And before Baker goes into, um, just some more follow-up. The reason that question was submitted by educators, I'm not sure if it's like that to the extent for District Six, but there has been, I guess, issues that unencumbered time is not being fully honored. Or sometimes educators are coming in at seven-thirty and that's viewed as the unencumbered time. When technically in the law for the state of South Carolina, that's not how it's supposed to be. But we're seeing some administrators and supers try and reduce, use the gray, so to speak. So that's why that question was submitted.
Some of the, some of the other things, it's not just beginning, but they'll throw it onto the end of the day.
Correct.
And it's, that's not the spirit of the, or they're what the little boys.
Is that other duties is assigned or?
I guess, yeah.
Um, we've got a few questions that were sent in advance by folks in the community who weren't able to be here. So these are, um, questions from the, from people in the community. And the first one is, uh, a public safety concern that will go beyond, of course, the walls of the school district, um, but affect the school district. Um, there have been, uh, student deaths, uh, of school District Six youngsters, um, involving car crashes. Um, a lot of roads in District Six and a lot of, I don't know how many students drive to Dormin High School every day and, and that kind of thing. But, uh, you've got interstate, you've got backroads, you've got city roads and, you know, city-like urban and suburban roads. So, um, what, what, what can be done to, to help prevent those tragedies in the, in the future? Kevin, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, you know, it, it's, oh, man, I always, like prom night, other nights, I always in the morning, um, I would always text our superintendent why I didn't, that we all make it home. And, and it is, I can tell you, we've had some, man, we had a run, um, two or three very close. And, um, it just breaks your heart. And for, and, and some of it breaks your heart is the helplessness of what can you do? I've got young drivers in my household and you talk to them, you, you tell them the dangers, you tell them to be careful. You tell, you know, there, there's a certain extent where what, what can you do? I think we, you know, through our driver's ed programs, through, you know, just the, the things that we do, you know, inside of our schools to be able to, to talk to them about texting and driving and, and just these, these different things. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we get a lot of flack whenever it's, uh, like wind gets real windy or, or bad weather and we, we cancel school or we don't do it. You know, we get, we were talking about the guy earlier, and he always goes, "Man, I can't believe y'all canceled school again," or delayed school. And I'm like, "It's not just about this. It's about we've got, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old drivers that are all converging down and they really don't know how to drive that well anyway. And we're not gonna put them in, in some of these situations." So, you know, I mean, there's, to a certain extent, with, with, with kids that age, there's X amounts you can do. And, and that's unfortunate. Um, and, and when you're dealing with the, when you're dealing with that many kids, as we do at Dormin High School, that are, that are driving, um, it's a, I just hit something that we, we just think about it all the time. Of what can we do outside? Now, inside the walls, we feel like we do everything that we can to keep them safe and to send those kids home safely. And when they leave our walls, you know, we, we have to, we can educate as much as we can, but there's, there's so much we can do to help prevent these things. And then, that's, I'm not gonna record.
Kristi?
Um, so I, you know, of course, our schools right now are doing a really good job with having metal detectors and stuff in the schools. So being safe on campus, I know, has been a major focus for our district. Um, I think we were one of the ones first in the upstate that made sure that all of our schools have metal detectors, have a security officer up front. So like Kevin was saying, I think when they're in the walls of the school, um, our district does an amazing job to, to make sure that our kids are safe. Um, as far as when they're driving, I know state wall just passed where you, driver cannot have a phone in their hands and they can't be utilizing that. Um, so I hope that we see better results from that because teenagers like to have phones in their hands and not paying attention and try to multitask. So I hope that we see some really good results from that wall. Um, I know right now they're giving warnings for it, so they've given a grace period. But hopefully, these kids will understand that. And also, um, you know, I, like I said, I've been in public service, so I'd like to collaborate with partners and bring in maybe the sheriff's office. And I know we have some officers, our schools in the city, bring those in. Bring in our coroner's office so that they can do sit downs with these kids and really show them the effects of what happens when you have distracted driving for it, even if you just for a moment take your, your mind off of things. Um, so just to, to help in that area too. But, you know, I know our district does a lot right now to help our kids, um, but I would love to be able to add to that.
All right, Troy?
Yeah, um, like Kevin, I've got teenage drivers and so this is constantly on, on our minds, whether it's our students, whether it's our children, both. I'll say, this is not a new problem, but it certainly is an accelerated problem. I think a lot of what you're citing, Baker, was some really tragic events that occurred in the spring right before graduation. And so, it is a in-front-of-us-now problem. Uh, I'll say this, our district office and Mr. Robertson in particular, our, our principal at Red Dormin High School, no one feels it more than those individuals. Whether that's, um, you know, visiting the homes of these families, whether that's, you know, citing the number of students that Mr. Robertson has said, "Hey, I've lost X number of students since I've become principal," it's top of mind. And so, we may not have a solution today, but I can assure you that there is a tremendous amount of discussion and thought given to what we can do on the education front. And I think those are some really interesting and unique ideas that, that could be explored to try to educate broadly all of our students at Dormin and R.D. Anderson. They're different than we try to educate our, our kids every time they get in the car and leave the house.
Yeah. Um, slight follow-up, and if nobody has a comment on it, that's fine. But since I work for the newspaper and we're interested in, um, public safety things broadly, are there, um, well, again, you've got a lot of roadway, uh, in the district. Um, are there particular trouble areas? I mean, is there anywhere that like, if you could get together with, um, county or highway patrol or, or even city, you know, you would say, "We really need help on such and such a road or intersection," or, "Can you please add a red light?" Or, e- e- I just, I'm just curious if there's any.
I mean, we got, I mean, our roads, I mean, our, we got the big, biggest district in the county. And I mean, it is vast, go to the Union and then to Woodruff and then up to Bull and Springeland. I mean, there's roads that, um, I mean, we've got everything. And we've got two major interstates. We have some of the worst backroads that, that are in the entire, in the entire county. I, I think if you probably, I, I think back over the last ten years, I think most of the thing, most of the incidents that we have had have probably been on the interstate. Um, and, you know, the backroads, we, we've had some, I mean, I'm thinking, it's terrible to think like, because you're, you're thinking about actual kids. And, um, you know, we just, it's so vast. I mean, and again, I hate to say, "I don't know what else we can do with the roads." But I do know there's, there are some things you mentioned in the city. I know that, that Bill Ryan is, is very interested. We're going, he's reached out to me about doing some things collaboratively with the sheriff's office and really getting involved with the schools. Um, you know, obviously, they're dealing with public safety and roads and those kind of things as well. And Bill being a former highway patrolman, um, has a little bit keener interest in, in that. So, you know, I think there are, I mean, obviously, it's just education. I mean, and just trying with, with kids, it's just beating into those heads of guys to make a decision. One second, one second can change your life forever. And unfortunately, we've seen that too often.
Um, well, thank you all. Um, okay. The next question has to do with growth. Um, I believe Dormin's the largest high school in the state, or it's one or two probably, Cynthia, is that?
Yes, I'm right.
Is that about right? Um, did it mean the question? Some districts in the upstate are looking at bond referendums and things like that. Um, District Five, um, voters will have a $200 million bond referendum to vote on this fall. Um, does that look like something on the horizon for District Six with continued growth? Or is everything kind of, kind of situated and buttoned up at this point? Or, um, yeah, is that a possible need? Um, Troy?
Yeah. Yeah, um, you know, your final comment about is everything buttoned up? No, I would tell you that if we're not looking twenty years out, we're missing an opportunity to, to plan for and mitigate some of those larger impacts that we're seeing some of the outlined districts have. And, and so, I think that's what this board right now is doing. We're looking twenty years out. We're trying to understand what the population influx is going to be and what facilities are ultimately going to be required. The good news is, as you've seen, with very little impact and no referendum, historically, over the last couple of years, we've added, uh, capacity at many of our elementary schools and begun to, to add capacity in several others. And, and done it along the way in a thoughtful manner to get ready for communities that are growing and expanding, given the population influx. I think our challenge in the coming years is how do you continue to do that and do it in a, in a reasonable and measurable manner? And, and that's where you shift hats from parent to taxpayer to resident to board member. And, and you thoughtfully say, "Not everyone has students in this district and has a different perspective." And so, we have to be mindful of the resources that we have available in the district, how we use them and how we build those resources towards the right type of capacity projects that will, you know, help ensure that twenty years from now, we're not staring down significantly larger class sizes, lower impact, unhappy teachers and all the problems that we spent the last thirty or forty minutes talking about.
Okay. Um, Kristi?
Sure. Um, so I'm not currently on the board, so I don't know some of the inner workings. But just being in District Six, um, I think they have done a really good job of planning for the future, like Troy said. Um, you know, and we have great students, great families. And it, it shows because they return to live in this community and raise their families here and work in this community. And so, when we have more families living here and returning here, then that increases your taxpayer dollars. And so, that's just a great return on what we have investing in our students. And I would be one of those people that would want to look out past. We don't need to build for what we have now. We need to look down the road to see what that looks like as far as technology, buildings, whatever spaces that we would need for our students and our educators.
All right. Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, and I would echo some of what's been said. And, and you know, we're, there's thousands of houses right now under construction in District Six. I mean, you drive anywhere, drive any direction you want to go and you will find houses that, that are going up faster than you can do anything. We, uh, we're gonna have to do something. I mean, we're, we're gonna have to do something for the, for this growth. Uh, we've been really committed to keeping the tax, the millage rate of things low and we're, we're, we're continuing to be committed to that. What we're looking at is what are the options for being able to handle the growth that is coming and be able to do that in a way that, that respects, out of our tradition of not raising taxes and not going back to the voters and asking for a tax raise to, I mean, if we're raising their taxes to do other things. And so, that's, that's what we've been committed to. At the same time, looking out and spending a lot of time planning. We spend a lot of time planning. Now, this goes, it's a long tradition on this board, well before even my time on it, of people, um, planning. Mr. Harris is here. He's one of them. He's an engineer. He can overplan anything. Um, but, but you got people like that that have been on this board that have planned for the growth that we've had to be able to keep our taxes down and moving into that big, the, the Fine Arts Center, the big, huge building on the end. Going in, I think after we moved in, it was two or three years later, you know, we were, we were done with that. We, we were done with that. But we, um, we're looking right now. And, and again, some of the, some of the answers to this go to not what we have, Troy. The fee-in lieu of taxes model we have right now with all the industries coming into us is, is very, very bad for public education. A lot of people say, "Look at all these industries around." You talk to your District Five folks, I don't know if they talk about it or not, but, um, same thing. See, all this industry, but they have fee-in lieu of taxes. So you don't have that, that residual tax base coming in from your industries. And that's just real, that's a really hard model for, um, for our public school and public education. So we gotta work, we gotta work on that piece. And then with our friends on county council and other, and then, you know, we gotta work on just planning and not letting these things jump up and, and out of nowhere again.
Okay. Thank you all. So no ten-figure bond referendums on the, uh, agenda quite yet?
Uh, we're, we're not. We have, there's no plans to raise.
All right. No headlines coming out of that. All right. On the, uh, the question of, um, of
Economic development.
Fee-in lieu, yes. Um, there are estimates of, uh, South Carolina, uh, having lost, South Carolina Public Schools having lost $3 billion in the last five years due to states, uh, the, the tax abatement programs. Um, I can imagine that there's, there's a lot here. I don't know the exact equation of, you know, when a company does come in, um, even with the, the fee-in lieu, are they still paying something that, over a period of years, is pretty valuable to the district? But I know that there, that's been a topic that's been addressed, um, quite a lot, uh, over the years. Um, District Five reportedly has lost, um, a net $107 million to abatments, um, which is one of the most reportedly in the country. What's a, uh, what's a way to, 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 to look at that? I mean, or is it, is it work with the, the county council? Is it, um, you know, invite these companies to get to know the schools better and want to contribute in other ways? Um, you know, are there infrastructure projects they can be asked to commit to on the front end that maybe aren't part of the, um, aren't part of the millage? Uh, and maybe are a little bit aside from the, the fee-in lieu or maybe rolled into that? Um, what are your thoughts? Um, why don't we start with Kristi?
Sure. Um, so I think, you know, there, there's been a lot of, um, industrial industries come out on 290. And I think it's great that our county council offers them FLO programs to come in and to entice them and to get them here. But at the end of the day, what does that look like for our local districts, for that tax base? And so, I think we would definitely need to partner with our county council members and sit down and talk to them and look at what strategies and structures that they're offering to get economic development here. Um, and we need to make sure that it's not interfering with, um, you know, the, the success of our district. You know, it is, it's like you were saying, they can come in and look at what we have. Maybe they can come in and, um, partner with our district to build something. And that would be sort of, um, their contribution instead of that FLO. And most of them I know are like five to ten-year felos. Um, but I think we need to look at that and we definitely need to collaborate with our county council members on that.
Yeah. Um, Kevin?
Yeah, I think that's the, and I'm not trying to beat up my, my friends. I've got some really good friends on county council. And they would say that the fee-in lieu of taxes brings more people, it's gonna bring more employees in and then you're gonna get the tax base that way. Um, those two things are two different things. They don't, they don't weigh the same. And, um, so I think, I think that's the big thing is how do we communicate that with the, because it is important to get industry. It is important for jobs. It is important for all those things. And, and I'm a businessman and we, um, I, I contribute taxes to this district in really three different ways. Um, and, and I'm fine with that, but, but these larger companies, uh, when they come in, we have to figure out a way to, what is, what is the balance there? And then the state, you know, then the state puts requirements on you, how you can spend money and what you can spend money for. And some of that hamstrings us from being able to get, get, you know, people to do things out in, inside, inside of the community. So, you know, I think working with county, working with county council and so much of this is collaborating, not only with your county, but then with the state government and, and getting that pressure. Because so much of these, so many of these decisions are made, um, because of political, it's, it's political reasons of what's, what's the, what's the thing that's politically relevant at that time. And then to be able to say, "How do we, how do we continue to..." All this growth, because again, you look around, see all these houses being built because of the industry that's come. And then you're saying, "Okay, schools, go deal with this and, and, and house all these kids and take care of them." And, and all this, all at the same time, what, we're gonna be beating you up, um, constantly in, in the press. What, what can, how do we, how do we reconcile those two things? Of all the growth that's coming over here that they're throwing on us and then, but you don't want to fund us the proper way. You don't want to fund us the proper way out of Columbia. And then you don't want to fund us the properly what, the proper way in the county as far as the, with the fee-in lieu structure that we have right now.
Troy?
Yeah, there's not a simple solution to a pretty complex problem, uh, and, and it's not absolute here. I think we'd be naive. You don't have to look too far to adjoining counties to see where there's been tremendous industry drain. And they have significant problems in the other, right? Their tax base is inclined such that folks are moving to our counties, right, for, for these jobs or these industries. And so, I, I think the solution is somewhere in between. And we, we, we should welcome the opportunity to work with council to bring new industry here, bring new families here, bring new taxpayers here, and ultimately work for a better solution that maybe we begin to see the realization of those tax dollars earlier in the lifecycle. To your point, not maybe five, ten years out, and those agreements are all written at the behest of county, county council to draw- behest of county council to drive the ability to hit those folks here. And I understand the predicament that they're in, but if we overswing that vigilance too far, our county has the potential to drain the other way, which looks dramatically different and creates equally as frustrating financial problems.
Just for further context, thank y'all for those answers to the question. It's very complex, but the thing is, as they all indicated, with these current negotiations, yes, county council leads them, but nobody from the school districts are a part of that. So the question is with that, like, with these big businesses, now, we're not talking like the mom, pop shop, with these big businesses that do, we're trying to woo them here, is it prudent for them to contribute somewhat of the school tax? Or is it just like what the current argument is, oh, no, with all these folks moving in, getting homes, that can compensate it. But we're seeing in some districts and some areas that seems to not trend that way. So that's why that question was brought up, which again, y'all answered very well.
Yeah. I think we've got time for questions from you folks in the audience, if you would like. I guess as you raise your hand and we'll take it from there. Any takers? Yes, sir.
My name's Bill, former educator out here in this state, a couple other states. But is there a point, I know, like you said, the Norman High School's first 400 population?
Is that right? It's
4,000.
Two camps, good night, Ray, and then we have
Okay. With the two.
So my question, is there a limit to, with all this new population coming in, that you think this is getting too big to be a high school? Possibly down the road, we need to look at another high school? Or is that not even a consideration?
Are we going to get Pauline High School?
Bring it back.
Eventually. Anybody can start.
Because it's literally in my backyard, where I grew up, it's how my parents' home, where the dorm is, so I know that property really well. But it is, this surprises most people when I say this, that is the geographic center of our district. That'll tell you how fast our district is. Depending on who you ask, some will say, we need, it's too big, need another high school. I think the really genius of Norman High School is this, and I've had kids in all of these different, different areas of, if you're a super high flyer and AP, those kind of things, you're, you've got your own school there. If you struggle and you're, you're literally having to recover credits to be able to graduate, you've got your own school there. If you go to Norman High School, it's surprisingly, if you're in the school, it's surprisingly small from what the vastness of looking on from the outside. And what I mean by that is we're able to provide the small, if you go to a Fine Arts Center, it's, you know, you'll see kids, they'll be out in the hallway studying with their, some of their teachers will be there. We have labs set up there, it's like a college environment. And then we have the regular school. And so I think that it is, you know, the problem, but you mentioned Pauline, I remember when I first came on the board 16 years ago, we were talking about building another elementary school in the Pauline area because we felt like that's where all the growth would come. Well, the infrastructure did not keep up with it, so we don't have, when you go into Pauline, it's not as, it's not as densely populated as other areas of our district. The issue would be in building another high school is where do you put it? And then if you moved it, you would have to move it to the northern part of the district, and it would almost, it would create two completely different, and I just, I believe that inside of our school, as big as it is, we're able to provide the experience for any, any segment you're in. And the reason I know this is because I've had kids in all of it, and we're able to, we're able to do that.
Troy?
Yeah, I think you have to look at two things. The headline number is a, is a big number, but on any given day, to Kevin's point, there's a flow through that school to parts of our district that we've not done a good job of highlighting in this discussion. Our R.D. Anderson Technical School, our Master Skills Center, there is a large number of students that are flowing through those, call them off-campus sites or other sites, gaining valuable insights of education into, my daughter, as I illustrated earlier, career decision-making experiences, and at many times, careers. We graduate out of R.D. with the signing ceremony, hundreds of students that go right into the workforce in great paying jobs because of those sites and centers. And the value of those sites and centers, not only what they create inside walls, it relieves some of that pressure inside of the physical school. So to say, well, Norman is a 4,000 student high school, agree, but the freshman campus has a thousand of those students, we've got opportunity to look at expanding and growing that and cook down the road, necessitate growth expansion of the Norman campus, just given the physical plant and opportunities that exist in the, in the land around that set.
Quick follow-up, at any given time of the day, about how many Norman students are at R.D. Anderson?
I'm going to give you a number, and I'm going to look, I was going to say 600 or so. Probably between Master Skills Center and R.D. Anderson, 500 or 600 of those students. Keep in mind, you've got 1,000 of that 4,000 over at the freshman campus.
Yeah. That relieves some numbers in a way too. Kristi?
So I don't have any experience at the high school yet, my son will get there at some point, but I have family, friends who there, children have gone to the high school, and it's like Troy and Kevin were both saying, you know, they, one of them did go through R.D. Anderson, has a great job now, and then you also have kids who are doing dual enrollment. So some of them may be at the community college, or they may be upstate during the day taking classes as well. So I think that helps with the large numbers, but I know just from experience in District six, these teachers are great, and our, our district does a great job of making sure that the teacher-to-student ratio is great and they can really succeed.
Quick question is, R.D. Anderson and Master Skills, is that shared with any other districts?
Shared with District four and District five, so Woodruff and Norman.
Okay, that makes sense, because there was a question from the community who brought that up that I guess sometimes it gets filled up because of the competing districts. So their question was how, I guess, how was the way, can that be resolved or something or anything like that?
Plans are in motion right now from an expansion perspective to create more capacity for all three districts benefit.
Add R.D.
And R.D.
That might be a good story for me to look into. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Vicki Akkure, I have one child graduated from Norman, she's in IED program. She acquired a brain injury. As a parent, we had extreme difficulty. If it had not been for a central office and a gentleman was there at the time, this was 15 years ago, we struggled to get her services available, we knew it, but we had to advocate constantly. But that's not my question. I just recently read that by 2030, expectations of blue collar, however you want to find that, workers is going to increase by 40%. So I'm thinking, as a taxpayer in District six, that that is the expansion. Whether it's the Sparkner Community College or it's R.D. Anderson, not everyone is going to go to a four-year university college. And, and the industry coming in and those needs will, will spell whatever. I'm thinking you guys need to be on that track in your planning. And that's just a statement that I just wanted to make, not necessarily a question.
Can we agree or disagree?
And I think you're right, even when you look at the paid job, the kids are coming out of R.D. Anderson, making more than college credit.
Exactly.
And I would say two things. Yeah, I'd say two things, I'm sorry for your experience then, and I would say this, about the time I was coming on the board, and we've seen in this amount of time, that, you know, Mr. Harris is on the back, he's one of the longer-serving board members of IEDs and those kind of things, really, when you look at this last 10 years or 12 years, they have become, they have skyrocketed. I got one, my wife, she deals with those, and they have skyrocketed. And I can tell you that we spend a tremendous amount of time talking about how do we serve kids that have had, you know, situations, not known situations like your child's and others, so those individual plans to be able to help them. And when we say, wherever your business is true, and then one of the things, other things to speak, what you said, we used to talk about college readiness. And when I first came on board, we talked about college readiness. Now we hear we're college career readiness. Where we're, we got kids coming out and it's whether you're going into the workforce or whether you're going to college, you celebrate those things. And quite frankly, you got kids coming out, if they can, if they can go to R.D. Anderson and come out and go out to the workforce doing what they're doing now, they're going to get paid, they're going to get paid a tremendous amount of money, which is zero debt and any of those other things. So you're, you're spot on about the blue collar work, especially in this area that we live in.
If I may speak to you, we're talking about the IED. My son had an IED as well, and I think, well, I know for sure that has helped him, and then he has transitioned to the 504 now that he's in middle school. But I along with you, you know, when we started, we did know about some of those resources, but that's, that's my passion, is to make sure that parents know that those services are available, know how to connect those services, and know how to walk alongside the school to make sure that your child gets the education that they want.
Again, that was the weakness that I saw. And as a matter of fact, it happened in middle school at Dawkins, District six, and we were told at the time, she was the first one to have this particular acquired brain injury. And it was like, we didn't know what to do, and they didn't either. But I have to say, there was a very, I cannot remember the gentleman's name, and he's since retired, but he was in the district office, and he was very helpful, but we started with nothing. And it was, we had to advocate, and of course, at some points. So I'm glad it's improved. It's been that long, it's been a decade at least. I think she was 2009, so yeah. Anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing that.
You got anything else? We're pretty good?
Pretty good.
All right. Any, any other questions? Yes?
If I could go back to an earlier question, I just wanted to peel away a little bit of the protocol in order to dig at personal philosophy, if possible. We talked to, or at least I heard a little bit about the book banned in the school. But to ask about, how do you feel about the, just the very notion, the concept of book banning at the library, making books unavailable at a public library?
Anybody?
I mean, at the public library, I think with the public library, that's up to the parent to be their advocate for their child. I know I would be for mine personally, just on based on my beliefs, there are certain books that my son will not read, but that does not affect me to be able to listen to you about what you think for your child. You know, I think, again, every parent is their child's advocate, and I think in a public library, not only school district, that's certainly up to the state as to what goes in there, but I think as a parent, that would be your choice as to what to decide that your children should read in there.
Yeah, I'll just jump in. With, with my kids now aging up and growing, I probably don't spend enough time in public libraries, certainly not as much as I used to when I was, when I was younger. I think the notion of it is that as a school board, we don't have any say on that. And as a parent, fortunately, this was not a big topic or a big issue when my kids were younger, whether that was through lack of exposure or lack of those books or whatever else, it wasn't an issue or it didn't seem to be an issue when my kids were young going to libraries.
And I think that's the thing with the, you get to everything, you talk about public library, you talk about libraries inside of a, inside of a school, and even, even the things we're dealing with in the lower part of the state, which is where all this is, all this is coming from, it's set up where parents, parents, then they come and they complain about something, and then that's where that whole process, whole process starts. If you read anything about it, it's been a disaster down there. But I, I just believe, we're bound by what the state says in the, in the public, and there are some things that I wouldn't let my kids read that are, that are probably in our libraries, and that's my choice as a parent. Other, other parents have the ability to choose the same thing, what they want their kids to, to put in front of their eyes.
And can parents opt out if there's an assignment? A book being read in a class on the English literature or American literature, whatever, parents cannot doubt in District six?
Yeah, they can, and we have a, we have a process where, and, and we are not, the board has not interacted on any of these, which will tell you, I think it's a good thing, where parents have, have the ability to, to go through, and that's, there's a, there's a, I call it a council, but a group of people, including educators and district office staff, that hear the complaints from the, from the parents. And then if it were the ultimate in arbitrary, if it ever made it, we've never had that issue.
Which I think speaks to the trust of the community.
All right. Well, y'all, thank you. Good luck. I hope y'all all win, since y'all showed up for this thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Yeah. Please keep